Hello, everyone. I'm Lou Marciani, the Director of the Innovative Institute for Fan Experience. The institute serves as the leading and most trusted global authority on providing exceptional fan experience for sports and entertainment. One of the missions of the Innovation Institute is to host these international virtual town halls, designed to dive deep into critical issues and concerns in the profession. Today, we will be discussing managing events and venues during COVID era. We have a distinguished panel of sports and entertainment industry leaders who will join the IIF Medical Advisory Board Chair to discuss how to manage these events during this era. The appearance of multiple COVID variants and sub-variants are testing the public's patience, event management, and venue operations with changing health, safety requirements, and conflicting guidance issued by public health officials, sports leagues, collegiate athletic conferences, artists, promoters, venues, and more. So join us as these industry and medical experts share their wisdom about building operational resilience in the face of the ever-changing COVID guidance, forging beneficial benefits to partnerships to enhance revenue generation, recruiting and retaining capable workforce, and creating adaptable health safety policies that people understand. How will the pandemic affect sports and entertainment events and operations during 2022 and 23? So let's get started. I want to thank all our expert panelists, and I want to also thank those who came in for the session here today. I would like to introduce Charles Burns, Vice President of Security for ASM Global and IIF X Distinguished Fellow, who will serve as our moderator today. So Charles, it's all yours.
Thanks a lot, Lou. I appreciate it. And I want to second that and thank everyone for joining the town hall today. I think it's a great opportunity, you know, as we are moving into this era of doing things online. Someone I just saw, you know, put a note in the chat, as you said, international Lou, they're from Denmark, and they said hello. So I think that's a really neat thing that we're getting folks from all over the world to participate in this town hall today. First of all, I want to introduce our experts who are on the panel here. We have Farrell Booton from the New Orleans Director of Public Safety and Guest Services at the Caesar Superdome. Joe Coomer was the Vice President of Security at AMB Sports and Entertainment. Brian Herbert, our Vice President of Security for Golden State Warriors and Chase Center. Steve Miller, excuse me, the Associate Athletic Director for Game Management for Texas A&amp;M University. Ben Williams, who is the Director of Security and Parking at Houston Astros. Russ Simmons will hopefully join us, Chief Listening Officer and a great friend, a management partner with Venue Solutions Group. And last but not least, our good friend and our lead medical advisor, Dr. Til Jolly. You know, the topic of our discussion today is managing events and venues during the COVID era. And it's, as we were preparing for this discussion today, it's interesting that we brought up that it's been almost two years that we've been dealing with this pandemic. You know, the US declared on the 27th of January of 20, you know, this is a pandemic. WHO was later in March, and it's hard to believe that we are where we are now, still navigating and watching states and cities change their policies and procedures based on what's going on in the world today. So I'm going to jump right into it here with some of the questions. The first question being, does the panel anticipate further variants to impact future events? And Dr. Jolly, I'm going to pose that to you to start the dialogue off with the group today.
Yeah, thanks very much, and thanks for having me. And for those in the audience, we're not going to do big, long presentations today, which probably makes you happy, and I'm not going to do a big one about virology and public health, which none of you went into the sports and entertainment venue business to learn about. But you've now learned about it for over two years. So lots going on, lots to unpack, and what's going on now. Things have obviously changed. We've all learned a lot. As far as variants and mutations go, I think we certainly can anticipate some more mutations and variants. Basically, what happens is when a virus goes person to person, it mutates. It's an error in coding, and that is more likely as the virus goes more from person to person, which is happening still around the world at alarming rates. And then those combinations of mutations create a variant, many of which you've never heard of, because they didn't cause any problem. They were less transmissible than other variants. They kind of died away. But obviously, Omicron has been the most recent one, and a sub-variant of Omicron that our colleague that I heard was on from Denmark probably knows all too much about, because Denmark has actually seen a fair amount of this sub-variant over time. So there will, you know, I think it's entirely likely there'll be other variants and other mutations in the virus. We've learned much more how to track them and how to manage them, and it's going to be part of what we in all industries have to deal with over time.
Thanks, Dr. Jolly. I want to kind of piggyback off this to Steve. And not so that you're a medical expert, but what are your thoughts on how these variants can impact, especially at the collegiate level, events that you guys are doing?
I think Dr. Jolly is right. I don't think anybody knew who all the public health folks might have been, and nobody went to school for all this, and I don't think anybody, any of us in college athletics did that either. But I think we ended up learning a lot along the way and learning about a lot more resources that were right here for us on our own campus. And so we had engaged our own dean of public health, of our School of Public Health here on campus. And that was a huge, huge piece of what we did here, and that was actually our representative to the SEC's Medical Task Force. But you ask about the impact. Is that right, Charles, going forward?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think the impact is, you know, comes in a lot of different forms, which is, you know, staffing and, you know, how people approach just their mass gatherings. Are they wanting to come to your event if they sense that there is a health issue? What is it that you portray when you're at your venue, your facility portrays to the folks? In the past, it was like, oh, do you have clean restrooms? Or are the floors swept? Maybe that goes a lot, lot more farther steps. Are they watching closer how the food handling is going on than they may have? Most people go to concession stand. It is what it is. Are people keeping a closer eye on that? Those are all things that I think we have to, we have to keep an eye on as folks who run events and venues, just to keep abreast of what our fans and our guests are thinking. What is it that is in our area? What happens here in Texas is radically different than what's happening in different other parts of the countries, and how our guests, you know, how their daily lives are. And we're, you know, we are kind of an outpost of that. They come here and essentially want to be entertained and continue their daily lives.
Got it. Thank you. On the West Coast, Brian, what are your thoughts on the further variants impacting future events?
Yeah, thank you, Charles, and thank you to my distinguished fellow groups on the panel. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time out of your busy days to tune in and hear from us. We, you know, in San Francisco, you know, we have pretty much led the country on being conservative, on, you know, requiring vaccines, requiring boosters, requiring it not only if you work here, but also to attend a Warriors game and/or a concert. So we have felt that, you know, from the beginning, you know, the entire population, work and guest, was going to be fully boosted. And just recently, San Francisco has now relaxed the mask requirement for indoor events. So, you know, that for us is going to be a huge game changer in the sense that, you know, we don't have to whack the mole when it comes to guests not wearing a mask. And we can go about our, you know, event preparation and execution of our plans so much easier than worrying about whether or not, you know, a guest is eating or if they're just simply refusing to be part of mask compliance. And there's my cat jumping into the picture. So to the extent that, you know, the next variant, we just don't know. But we're not going to, you know, be, you know, conscious of it to the extent that we're creating any type of concern, because confidence has been the number one thing that we've wanted to instill on not only those who work here, but those who attend events. If you're coming to Chase Center, you're coming to an absolutely safe facility, one that has been cleaned, one that has been disinfected, one that has, you know, adhere to all of the mask compliance issues and the vaccine issues. So if there's a variant out there and we just don't know about it yet, we're not going to assume a posture of being concerned about it at this point. We're going to live our lives.
Got it. I appreciate that. Really appreciate that. Joe, you got some soccer and some other activities starting up. Curious on your take on this question.
Yeah, I think we've been at, especially in Atlanta and the Southeast, you know, we're endemic right now, right? We're eight to 10 months out of it and moving forward, and we'll get pulled back in every now and then. We've been able to leverage the venue as a testing site and a back site. But moving forward, I think it's all just identifying that population of folks that want to come back to events, right? And that price point might have to change to get those folks back in the building, because we know those other folks aren't coming back. And it doesn't matter what you do. It doesn't matter how clean your bathrooms are, how good your food is. Like, there are folks, and we've got family members, like my wife doesn't like large crowds anymore. She's no plans on going back to a movie theater, let alone coming back to a venue. So that whole psyche is going to take years to recover. But on the other side of it, there's folks, they're over it, and like Brian said, they want to get after it, and they want their return to normal, or the new normal, or whatever subtitle we're using this week. Now you got to find the balance of both.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's one of the things that we all, you know, obviously in our prep call and speaking with some of the, probably some of the other folks who are on this call is, you know, we can't look back. We have to move forward, you know, and plan accordingly. And I think that's one of the big things that we're all trying to do as, you know, security and safety professionals and leaders within our own organizations. I'm going to jump to the next question, and that was sent in. And it's interesting that, what is your COVID-19 departmental structure? Is it a standalone department, or does it fall under operations, hygiene, public safety, et cetera? And I'm going to pose this, starting off to Ben, and it's interesting as we, you know, as we look to try to move forward and move into this new era, we still have to have policies and procedures in place, not going away, you know. So Ben, I'm going to pose that question to you to start the discussion off there.
I appreciate it, Charles. Yeah, when we took a different approach than probably some other organizations, just based on who we had here at the stadium. So our COVID team had some of our legal folks on there, some of our trainers, stadium operations, concessions, facilities. So we really grabbed a stakeholder from every department and pulled everyone into a group to identify how we were going to open the stadium, how are we going to receive some of our employees back, what are we doing on testing, communicating to guests? So we took a holistic approach, because everyone had a stake in it. Everyone had certain needs for their operation to be successful. Of course, you know, public safety being the primary one. And then we pulled in some of our folks with the city. So our Department of Health Medical Officer was part of that group, someone that was a special agent from the mayor's team. So we had, we took that holistic approach. As things continue to change, as guidelines continue to change, we adjusted. But all those folks had equal share at the table, and we're able to voice some concerns like, hey, you know, we can't find enough hand sanitizer. So maybe we can't open this amount of lanes for walk-through metal detectors, or we're running out of face shields, or we're looking for the disposable sticks to check bags. We had a big discussion amongst that group just about if we were going to allow bags in the building. How do we communicate that to the public? So each department really had a foot in or a seat at the table, trying to identify what those important things were for each department to be successful.
Joe, what about, you know, we talked about when this all took place, it seemed like it was just yesterday. Curious on how you guys laid out your department there, and obviously the folks on the call are probably curious as well.
Yeah, it's definitely a mix of a number of departments, and we created our kind of COVID response team. It's a mix of HR, security, and operations, right? So HR administratively doing the lift, the contact tracing, they're doing the policies and procedures, operations, delivering, you know, the PPE, signage package, making sure all the products are in place, masks and whatnot. What do we have on hand to prepare for the different events? And then also, you know, the security, unfortunately, you know, we're in that enforcement piece. And then, you know, security and law enforcement, we like our rules. We like our rules black and white. We like to do what's in the best interest of everybody, which isn't always everyone's favorite interest. But it's that group right there. So like our COVID response team is made up from our folks from HR, security, and operations, and it is tied off to our Chief Operating Officer. And then we just stay in tune with, you know, local health guidelines. We did not create, or we no longer have like a standing department that is like the COVID department. But we did for a while, especially during shutdown, where we did kind of harvest some folks from some of our different groups in security and HR and our contact tracing team. And it was set up, and at one point, it was 11 different folks running it down between testing and vaccinations and whatnot. But right now, we've got about three folks on it right now, and they're kind of the main touchpoints, either with clients, with the leagues. And then they're the ones that are communicating back to the departments on how we're going to execute game day, and then what we're doing fan-facing. So there it is. It is still a part of it. It is in job descriptions that we post, that there is, you know, contact tracing, involvement work with our infectious response team. So it's a part of it now. It's part of our landscape day to day.
Thanks, Joe. And Steve, you know, from the collegiate level, you have a mix of various teams, male, female, venues, all that. How did that all shape up from a collegiate level, university level?
And Charles, if you just look at the team piece, not only do you have male and female, you know, teams, you've got personalities and different coaches, different student athletes approach to COVID. Some more concerned, some less concerned, and those teams had to take into the approach of the most concerned. And that's how they had to approach everything they approached with their team. But being a Texas A&amp;M Athletics, we're just one part of the university, which is one part of the state. And so you're kind of taking some state guidelines, and I mentioned earlier, here on campus, we were led by our, you know, our School of and Dean of Public Health. But we also had to, you know, take into account what the SEC was going to be doing from policies and procedures. And, you know, the university was committed to having classes in play. And so once we're going to have classes, then we're going to play football, we're going to play soccer, we're going to do these things. So how are we going to do those safely with everybody's guidelines? And everybody was very slow, deliberate, didn't want to get out ahead of themselves and make a decision that they would look back on and wish they hadn't made so quickly. But I do think that our, having our, you know, Dean of Public Health engaged, not only at the highest levels of the university, leading that group along with some folks on the academic side, if you will, but also being engaged on the athletics side and with us here in athletics, kind of kept, you know, somebody from making a policy that wasn't really going to make sense when it came to, you know, how it would affect our teams and our guests. And so we adopted essentially everything the university did. There wasn't temperature checks. There weren't, you know, other than, you know, face masks coming to the venue. That was kind of it. We did have to adopt some SEC policies that were very specific. But, you know, we have to look at it as a, you know, one big piece. And then our teams, some teams went really strong into it, over and above SEC policies, and some right at the threshold.
I appreciate that. Yeah, that's, yeah, the personality piece comes into play. And as we've seen over time, you know, various opinions come into play on what, you know, how we try to mitigate and act and attend, and what we wear at sporting events is something that that is a daily challenge for a lot of the folks on this call. I'm going to go to our next question for this group, and it's, how do you think security has evolved during this time? And I think that's a pretty broad question. And what is the biggest challenge that you've experienced at your venue? And this is going through, you know, COVID from January of 20 till now. And I'm going to pass it over to Farrell to start this discussion off.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me be a part of this panel. Yeah, this is a very interesting question. So I'm going to speak about the elephant in the room here. The biggest thing obviously is staffing, right? So that has affected across the board regarding our staffing. I have been and spoke to many venues and some of my colleagues here, and we're just not hearing those numbers. You know, our staffing pool is a reflection of what's happening throughout the country in all different segments of all type of enterprise, right? We're not immune to it at all whatsoever. And because us as a team deals with extremely large numbers, it affects us even more so. So we had to kind of rethink the way that we do staffing as it relates to that. Kind of start from a zero-based staffing and kind of determine what positions are needed and not needed. You know, just kind of revamp the whole venue in terms of seeing what staffing is essential, what staffing is a must-want, and what stuff is a must-have, right? So that has evolved greatly as it relates to COVID. In terms of some other things involving is that, you know, we asked our security officer to do things that they wouldn't do naturally in terms from a security perspective, right? We asked them to check for masks. We asked them to check for vaccines in some cases here in New Orleans. So all that has evolved in a new teaching of a security protocol, procedure, and posture that we have now. So it's been very challenging, because they didn't sign up for that. All of us have become some quasi-experts or semi-experts in COVID response and how we relate to our guests, what have you. But nonetheless, those are the things evolving more so regarding our venue participation with staffing and so forth and so on.
Got it. Thanks a lot. I appreciate that. Brian, I pose that question to you, two questions.
Yeah, thank you, Charles. I think, you know, when we look at security, we're looking at the front line. We're looking at the 24/7 group. We're looking at the, no matter what the conditions are, they're still maintaining the safety and welfare of our facilities. And that, you know, cannot be overlooked or underestimated to the degree of how much COVID fatigue that group must have at this point. Because a lot of the security unit, you know, in my team, they also have dual responsibilities for events. So, you know, if you're working an event and you pull it off, but everything goes well, and then you're reporting back into have your building responsibility at 9:00 a.m., you're probably looking around wondering, where's the break? And we all talked about, you know, life-work balance and, you know, how that was all changed with the pandemic and how, you know, you could work from home, and people were looking at, you know, oh, here's somebody on a screenshot because they're, you know, in their living room, but I'm still here at the building. And so we're not, you know, overlooking that, and we're going back to our group to make sure that, you know, the mental health issue here is alive and well and maintained, and that, you know, nobody feels like, you know, they have been overlooked. And we want to do a variety of different feel-good, whether it's bring bagels in in the morning, whether it's, you know, I was able to get your family a couple of tickets for the game. We've gone about it in a way that reassures them that they're important and we're maintaining the, you know, the morale of the workforce. Because, you know, if you start experiencing, you know, call-offs and things that, you know, you just weren't planning on, because somebody is just, you know, worn out, then that's on us. And we as managers and folks who oversee teams on our respective companies need to recognize that and make sure we're taking care of them.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. That mental health piece is huge. You know, I think we're seeing that across our society, and it's impacted, you know, what we do in this business as well. Joe, what are your thoughts on, you know, how security has evolved during this time and your biggest challenge? And I appreciate everyone's frank and candidness on this discussion as well.
I think Farrell led us in the right space, first off, on adjusting our staffing and whatever we have to have and what are nice to have. And now we start looking at technology to really help us out. So is it that new screening technologies? Is it how we're using paperless ticketing? How we're doing cashless? Like, how do we, how do we start leveraging technology that is replacing what all of us are very good at, is delivering the guest service piece with our security, right? Like, 20 years ago, after 9/11, we had to add guest services back in to our security, because our security ramped so far up. And then, you know, we spent the last 20 years adding guest services. Now, automation is going to be replacing a lot of what our humans are doing. But as Farrell said, and Brian said, like, we're running out of humans to work on game day, to work on event day. Look at our training sessions. Look how many guards we have licensed. I mean, and part of it too is our fans. Like, we all know that, yeah, we are selling back out, but our fans, they're not quite back yet. So it's going to get there, and it's just going to take a while to get there. But I think the next thing we have to do is we got to find that sweet spot with the tech and our folks that want to work events. And as much as security, you know, a lot of our folks, they have to go through training or certification through the state. And that's a lengthy process, or can be a lengthy process, and you want to overlay what we have to teach them at our venues. The workforce that I haven't seen come back, and I don't know if it's just in Georgia, but that guest service team, that retired 65-year-old, I don't know if they're coming back.
I agree.
We've got to manufacture that guest service person. And there's business leaders that think, oh, you can just replace guest services with security. But would you replace security with guest services? It's like this chicken and the egg. You know, there's probably a part of that population where you can, you know, if they came in either through that guest service route, you know, maybe they are better for security, or if they came in through security and they like working event staff or more guest services to make that transition. So really identifying those folks and making that switch. But I'd lean heavy on where the tech can take us next and just be flexible with those workforces.
Well, it's funny, Joe. I appreciate that. I think technology is something that was on our list of questions. So Chris, I'm going to kind of go off script here a little bit, and we're going to take a question from the chat. And it came in from Steve Lasky, and this leads to one of our questions is, what sort of advanced technologies are stadiums and arenas deploying to help mitigate risk in this environment of social unrest and heightened political polarization? That's a great question, Steve. I appreciate that. And I'm going to probably go back to Joe to start us off and then kind of go around the horn, because I think, you know, as Joe alluded to, we have to find that balance. And you already going down a path, and I'd be curious on some, maybe some deeper thoughts on that.
Yeah, we were definitely kind of first in that the, we're there with the Evolve Technology or the Patriot One or the Open Gate. If you haven't heard of those three products, I can tell you their marketing folks are great, because they're banging on the doors everywhere. But that next level of inspection, it's here, it's now, it's effective, it works. We need to get our friends over at DHS up to speed on the testing, on the implementation of it, you know, how the product works. But what we've seen it do in the last three years saved us on our staffing levels. Work with Farrell's group quite a bit, being in the NFC South, and we talk about our staffing levels in the other NFL teams. And we saw some numbers out there, like, these venues couldn't get 50% of their workforces that we were seeing out of like the Northeast and the Northwest. You know, in Atlanta, because we went to the Evolve Technology, we cut 30% of our security workforce needed on game day at inspection. And that allowed us to hit our staffing target right around 95% for all of our major events. So that's one way we use technology to get us in a space that we were able to keep a lot So that, that's one way we use technology to, to, to get us in a space that we were able to keep a lot of those positions. You know, if you had to whack out, you know, three, 400 positions from your, from your deployment, you would go to where the meat is and that's the gates and that's what we were able to do and still put us in a place where our throughput were, was as good or better. And it's really cool to see in the fan verbatims, hey, I didn't even go through security that that's like how they felt going through it. When they all walk through those, well, I'll walk through it, you know, and our, our fan arrival ratings went from 9.2s to 9.9s. So we, we went there right away with, with that piece of the technology, with that next level of weapons detection at our gates.
Yeah. Good. Ben, curious on what, what you've been doing down your way from a technology standpoint?
Well, you know, we are a space city, so everything's pretty much, you know, above and beyond. No, I'm just kidding. So during the season, we, we continue to use a lot of our social media monitoring, just seeing what fans are talking about in the stands, both before the game, during the game and after the game or the event. We, we have a, a pretty large assortment of cameras here. So we've really heavily been pushing technology for quite a while through our command center. So we're continuously monitoring all of the, all of the gates during ingress and then during play as well, looking at the, the crowd and kind of mustard points, people might start crowding for whatever reason. And then, you know, the, the biggest technology that you have is your people. I mean, your people see what's going on, they hear what's going on. And, you know, I, I think we all saw that when fans came in the building, initially, everyone was excited to be here. And then all of a sudden a light switch just flicked on and fan behavior changed. It went from everyone's hugging and we're not hugging, but you know, distance, high fiving, we're back, we're back, we're at events. And then something happened and it just, just, so we've, we've had to heavily rely on a lot of our staff to tell us of evolving situations, using our, and then leveraging our technology to, to see what is going on. I know there's some pretty cool tech out there that does the, that does heat maps for cluster points of fans. We haven't really gotten into that too much. We're really focused on making sure our staff has the proper training, leveraging them to, to help us with our technology as tools as making a fun experience for all of our fans.
Thanks, Ben. I think that's very important. You know, I think as we sit here, you know, that fan experience is, is number one. And we have to do everything that we can to ensure that. Brian, I know you guys do a few things out there in the Bay area. You know, I'm glad your team's doing well as compared to before. And tell us about some of the, the advanced technology you guys might be using, you know, in regards to Steve's question, to really keep the risk down.
Yeah, I, I think that in the vaccine checkpoint space, that was a natural step for Clear to enter. So, you know, Clear, we all knew about, you know, in the airports and how that could be expeditious for you to, you know, bypass the boarding pass checkpoint and then go to security. But Clear entered in as a partner with Chase Center to provide that digital wallet, if you will, on your vaccine information. So it really sped up the process in which guests, you know, and, and, and again, in San Francisco at the time, all guests were required to not only have your, your full vaccine shot, but also your booster. And that was loaded into your Clear Pass. So that digital passport, if you will, was an expeditious way for those checkpoint screeners to simply see your Clear, see that it was good to go, it was green. And, and the verification that it was, you know, an identification verifier was already accomplished through the, the Clear app itself. So once you showed that pass, you were, you were good to go. Conversely, you know, there are other lines that weren't quite as efficient. And that was the one that would, here's my driver's license, here's my CDC card. And you had a person who was matching up the two pieces of identification and verification to say, yes, you can proceed now to, to security and then to ticketing. So Clear has certainly helped us out in San Francisco. And then I would also say that Envoy did a really good job in terms of its guests and, and employee visitor program in adding the health portion to all of that was really just, again, it was one of those, we already had it. And then we expanded it to include a, a health questionnaire that allowed not only employees, but also vendors to have an efficient ingress into the building. So those were the two significant ones that I would use.
Okay.
I defer to colleagues for any others.
Got it. I'm gonna kind of jump back a little bit to a question I think is, and we've talked about the challenges and, you know, how security has evolved. But for this group, you know, what do you see as some residual effects venues will be faced with even after the pandemic is over? And I'm gonna start off with Dr. Jolly on this one. Get your thoughts.
Yeah, you know, this has been a fascinating time and, and, you know, I want to congratulate the group. Nobody has talked about the pandemic in the past tense yet because people are doing that and it's, and it's not over. But, you know, we will reach a point of steady state. Now this virus will be with us probably for years to come in some way or another, but perhaps hopefully not nearly as bad as it has been. Happily, there's a much greater awareness now among this industry and many other industries about the importance, importance of infectious diseases, whether they be respiratory viruses like this one or ones like the flu or others that, you know, it can devastate. All you have to do is talk to the, the cruise ship industry. They are all about infectious diseases because they've shut down some cruise ships in the past. So there's an increased awareness of that and increased awareness of the messaging for that. And really, one of the key things that I think all of you've probably learned is how to really work with your public health authorities in, in a collaborative way and in a cooperative way. So they're not just enforcing things, but they're learning about what you do and the importance of what you do for the community because you're a huge community resource, a huge community economic engine. They've learned from you and you've learned from them. And I think if we really keep those relationships going, we're gonna go a long way toward future success.
That's, that's real good, Dr. Jollies. I think, you know, if you go back, I'm slowing the time about going back because many years ago, when we talked about the public health authorities, food contamination, someone got sick or whatever, you know. But here we are today looking forward and really those relationships, I think, are critical from a success standpoint. Steve, pass that question over to you. The residual effects venues will be faced with even after the pandemic. We've tried to move on from that.
I know, and I, I appreciate what Dr. Charlie said about the, the, our public health, you know, partnership with that. I mean, our, our guy goes, hey, I've, I go to a lot of athletic events. I've been to your football stadium. I've been to basketball games, but I've never looked at how these policies may impact what's going on and what, what you guys are trying to accomplish. You know, because things may affect fans, but they also start affecting the teams. And we were looking at distances from fans to, to benches. And so it was a, you know, we spent a lot of time literally walking every step of our operation with our public health partners and not shying away from it and, and accepting the, the, the input. Because what they did allowed us and continued to allow us to continue to do what we're doing. You know, some of the residual effects, can't say it enough, is going to be staffing and, and your approach to staffing. So, I mean, yeah, we get, we get a lot of calls from a lot of people selling us a lot of evolves and, and open gates and things. But here at least at Texas A&amp;M, and I imagine that at more colleges than not in the university and college area, we're lagging and we're lagging mainly in a financial standpoint to be able to implement some of those technologies. Many institutions still recovering from the financial impacts that the COVID cancellations and other costs associated with resuming play have put on, on those institutions. Here at Texas A&amp;M, we managed to come out okay. A lot of our, our peer institutions did not. They are in, in a great, great set of debt. And so when it comes time to evaluating those emerging technologies and implementing them, it's gonna be a big challenge. I know it is here. We have not implemented any of that technologies. We're trying to, just trying to survive and advance, if you will. But that day is coming, that day of reckoning is, is, is quickly upon us because the staffing models just aren't going to sustain all of this. And, you know, we, we managed to survive this last season with our staffing. And, you know, some of our secret shoppers came in and, you know, said, wait, how did you do that? You, you guys had staff everywhere, everywhere I looked, you seem to be properly staffed. How did you do that? Because we see all of these other institutions or franchises, whatever, coming out going, hey, we had a big drop in services. We didn't get it done. We had staffing challenges, whatever. Our folks at Texas A&amp;M didn't have to make that me a culpa. And it's because we came in with an aggressive plan on how to really do some smoke and mirrors when it came to staffing. I, I compared our staffing to an episode of the old TV show Wings. Little small airport in Massachusetts was run by like four people. And every time you turn around, it's the same four people. They were flying the plane, they were running concession stand, they were taking tickets. That's what we did. That same person taking your ticket may have helped you on the escalator, may have helped you at the concession stand and probably showed you to your seat and you didn't know it, but we had to be aggressive in that area.
That's interesting, Steve. Good comments. I mean, I think we're seeing that from a lot of folks. And I think that ties back into how we treat, you know, our, our, our team members and employees during this time as we, as we go into this new, you know, dynamic of, of what's important. How do we ensure their mental health's taken care of?
We, we had to, you know, when you talk about the taking care of folks, we have asked more and more of the staff and ask them to do more to take, take over for folks who didn't, you know, called out or, or were never even in place to, to come on to, to site. And so trying to, to keep an eye on them and make sure we're not overworking is, is also becoming a, you know, very high, high item on our list.
Yeah. And Charles, may I add some of, some of the residual effect that we have to add with Steve mentioned is that to incentivize our staff, we pay more now. So our cost, daily cost is much higher than it would normally be. I mean, we bussing folks as far as from, from Joe Krumas from Atlanta to get here to work for us on game day. So that's some of the residual, residual effects that we have. We pay for their dinner now. We pay for lunch with them. So our costs have risen since then as a effect of it.
Well, and I think that's one thing that, you know, like dislike, and I don't know, this is kind of part of that question. And maybe Ben and Brian might want to chime in. I mean, that is the price of doing business is what I'm seeing. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts as we talk about this. I mean, in order to get good people, security, guest services, you know, the price is going up. Ben, Brian?
Yeah, Charles, I would, I would agree with that. I mean, when, when you look at it, I mean, when, when all this started the first quarter of 2020, I think most of us already have staffing issues. Or at least we weren't, you know, we might be getting 80%, 90%, you know, we're, we're, we're hosting live events. We never have enough. I think we all can agree on that. But then the pandemic hitting and then everything else going on in the world. I mean, people took a hard look at their life, like was this job really worth driving downtown, getting paid nine bucks an hour, missing time with my children, my grandchildren? I mean, I, I, I think from all this, everyone got a real shock to life and start reevaluating their priorities. And so, yeah, definitely having to go from $9 to $12, that might incentivize a number of people. But there's, there's people out there, especially with our guest services staff, who are all older, retired. They're just saying, no, thank you. They're just saying, appreciate what you've done for me and I'm, I'm gonna go another direction.
Yeah.
And then even for, we see that in our law enforcement as well. The rates we were paying in our law enforcement, there's a whole new generation of, of police officers out there that they don't want to work extra jobs. And, and unless you're paying some absorbent rates going up into the triple digits, there are people that just don't want to work. They want to work their 40 hours a week and go do something else. And that's definitely a change from when I started in the industry eight years ago and the sports industry. Just there, there's been, it's a continuous shift towards, you know, the disability where people are, they've just had enough. So it's, it's a, and I, I feel that we will continue to struggle with it for years to come.
Yeah. Brian, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's no secret that, you know, we pay the highest rates in the city of San Francisco. So we, you know, we don't want to get caught up in, you know, how do we even pay more, right? So, but, but it's, but it is a fact of life that, you know, we're gonna have to visit the security industry as a whole and make sure that, you know, we're not competing with $15 or $20 an hour at Taco Bell. And that's no disparaging remark about Taco Bell. I love Taco Bell, by the way. But it's, these are security professionals and you're expecting them to be the front line, to find prohibited items, but also to find that item that could be harmful to you. So it's not just, you know, finding somebody trying to sneak in a, a bottle of water or, or something that is not so much harmful. We're, we're looking for the person that has bad intentions, that is trying to sneak in something that could potentially be harmful to you. And underpaying that person is not going to continue to be a good security plan. So the other thing I want to touch on too is I think we're in desperate need of quality supervision in the security field. You know, when you, when you walk around and you're part of these security briefings that are going on, I think it's essential to make sure that your influence is being heard and felt by this group. You know, it's, it's the days of, okay, everybody show up at the east entrance and we're gonna walk through the things that we always talk about and, and it all just comes across as blah, 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 blah. And, and I think this is a time for us to inject ourselves and our experience and get into these discussions and let individuals hear how important their roles are and what the expectations are as well.
Very good point. And please, I see heads shaking here on this panel. You can chime in at any point in time if you want to piggyback on some of these comments.
Yeah, one of, I think one of our, you know, challenges when it comes to law enforcement is, is who is supervising the supervisors? And we have so many different agencies coming in to help us in a small college town, 90 miles north of Houston, 90 miles east of Austin. Our, our net is having to go farther and farther. We're getting down closer into, into the county that, you know, that been is that we are getting officers farther and farther away and you end up having to pay more and the university doesn't want to extend itself that far from what it perceives as liability having officers who aren't used to perhaps the fans or the student environment that is here at this venue as opposed to maybe at a, at a venue in a different, different location. So very conscious of that. At the same time, we have officers choosing to not work our event and work an event that may be less volatile, less, you know, less chance of interaction. They'd rather just go watch the, you know, the banquet or a, you know, thing at the expo center as opposed to 100,000 of, with a full alcohol service at Kyle Field.
Yeah. You, you know, that's, that's a very interesting note you have there. The problem that we have in my region, maybe Joe, we live in the same area here in the south, is that our police force is down 30% from full staffing. That translates right into our detail. There's no difference. So I have to, I have to toggle with that and struggle with that every day and have to kind of reinvent myself in terms of how staff the police because that's exactly what's going on. They're 30% short on a full force of 1600, at least 30% short on a voluntary detail. So you can imagine the struggle that we have with that. So that was a important role as well. How is shaping in your, you know, your county, your parish in terms of the police force available toward details?
That's interesting. I mean, I think that's, that's a common theme here as we, you know, continue our discussion is that what is taking place in the world impacts what we're doing. The same things are happening in our businesses. We look to get talent, we look to get staffing, we look to get the police. Everything, it, it trickles down into, into what we're doing to, in hosting events. Um, one of the questions that was uh, brought up here and Chris, I apologize, I'm kind of going down a couple. Uh, you know, on the call, you know, obviously with ASM Global and everybody here, we, you know, we have arenas, stadiums, theaters, convention centers. So we have a whole host of, of, I hope venue of security and operations uh, uh, team members on the call. But the question was, how can national events and world tours be delivered with differing and continually changing COVID requirements state to state and by country to country? That's a pretty uh, wide ranging uh, uh, topic. Seeing that, you know, over the last week, everybody's changing their COVID requirements. You know, Kyrie Irving's trying to figure out if he can play and they're doing all these different things. So um, I'm gonna start off with Farrell on this one.
Yeah, this, this is very interesting. Uh, one of the things we have down here in New Orleans, we have a neighboring building called the Smoothie King Center where we host many, many concerts, as you can imagine. Um, we, we'll be marked, but nonetheless, we, we have our fair share of thirty plus concerts in a year. Um, the interesting thing about the touring industry is it varies depending on the artists. Uh, some artists restrictions are very different and it all was very depends on the, on the type of gender of the music. Country shows are a little bit different than rock shows. Rock shows are a little bit different than uh, urban shows in terms of their protocol procedure. What we find is that they have the specific protocol procedure as it relates to the areas that they're most frequent. Back of house, front of house. As it relates to the fans, they're just concerned, they're just, they're not as concerned, but they just, you just go by your guidelines of your state and parish in terms of what the protocol and mandates are. But in terms of the touring folks, we finally start to pick up. Cause those touring agencies, they need to get on tour to make money as well. So they're picking up with their, with, with, with their events as well. But it all depends on the artists in terms of how enforceful, enforceful they are in terms of COVID restriction. For instance, we had the Elton John concert. The most restriction we ever had, everyone had to get tested. Work back of house every day. Uh, it was a rapid test, but nonetheless, if you work in that vicinity of back house where he was located at, you had to get tested. Was very interesting. An urban show, a rock show wasn't as restricted. So, you know, you have to be very flexible with that. In turn, your staff who works back there have to be extremely flexible. You have to have a wide range of pool of employees that able to adapt to that. Some of our artists require a booster shot, but some of our employees are not boosted. So you can imagine the juggling that we have to do in terms of finding the personnel, the twenty or thirty officers is needed to work the back of house area. So it was a very interesting dynamic as it relates to the touring shores that I've experienced.
Thanks, Farrell. I appreciate that. Yeah, you're, you're definitely right on how that uh, that uh, plays out. Um, uh, Ben and Joe, what are your, what are your take on this? Uh, what's your take on this question?
So we uh, it, I, I, I have to agree with what Farrell says. I mean, the artists definitely have a, you know, big say in it and a lot of times um, that I've noticed it's their, their advanced team. Their advanced team is raising the alarm that they want this and this and that. And it's funny, the artist shows up and they're contradicting everything that the advanced team told you that they wanted. They're not restrictive. They have like forty friends back there hanging out, you know, hugging and everything. Um, but as, as far as these national events, um, um, how we can approach them is, is definitely having those relationships bo- both with the security advanced team um, as well as your local uh, medical professional. So that way you uh, with their, with their city or municipality. So that way you know what the evolving changes are. Um, and then just being um, uh, up for us and a, a parent with the artist. Um, you know, if you have an artist um, showing at a stadium that has retractable roof and they want to open that retractable roof in the middle, mid, middle of a Texas summer. Yeah, that's not a really good idea. Uh, I'm sure Steve would agree with that. It's rather warm down here, uh, this part of country during those times. So uh, you know, just being up for us and hey, making sure that the, the artist knows that this, it might be an evolving situation regarding the regulations or what they want to do at your stadium. And if you have those, those standard SOPs or those, that checklist that you give to every event person you have um, in your organization that's going out trying to get these concerts. Uh, you know, you're giving them the tools um, for, for them to be successful. So at least if you have a Elton John, a Billy Joel, or any of these individuals coming through, they're already, they're already in the headspace of what they can and can't do in your building. Because at the end of the day, it's your building. And if you set forth that firmness at the very beginning that it is your venue, uh, it's your venue and you're gonna run it, you know how to run it successfully. You might get a little pushback, but at least you've already set the stage. You're not, they have shown the artist is refusing the uh, to perform because, you know, there's not forty eight M and Ms in their dressing room or something that landers. And yeah, there are artists who count their M and Ms. Um, so that, that would be my take, Charles, and, and for the other panelists, just making sure that you have a checklist that your, your folks that are making these sales um, has at their disposal. So when they're making those negotiations that before the contract is even signed, all parties have agreed to those um, those protocols.
Mr. Kummer?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Ben, Ben's, Ben's on it, so is Faro and, and Brian. Like, we spent the past year dealing with crazy town where the concerts all came through the first time. And it was COVID extreme this, test that, you know, we need, you know, more Clorox wipes in this room. We, uh, I don't know, who did COVID sniffing dog? Someone brought in COVID sniffing dog?
Oh, yes, yes. I forgot about the, the sniffing dogs there. We can't forget about that.
So we've all kind of like, we, we did like round one, which, which is great. Um, it allowed us to now, we can all speak the languages. We get ready for round two in the summer concert series, especially for the stadiums and the arenas. You guys are gonna crank out thirty, forty concerts this year. Um, I think, I think the Live Nations and the AGs and the tours, like they're coming, they're coming back to uh, they're coming back to planet earth now that they've seen cost of what all these things are. And we're gonna meet in the middle, right? We're not, we're not saying COVID doesn't exist, but we're gonna say, hey, this is, this is what we're gonna do. This is our plan. This is what works here. Allow us that works with our health advisor, because they're going into different markets every single time. You know, that's different when they're in California than when they go to Florida. Um, and their expectations change. But I think now we all speak the language with them. And I think now we can all get to a common place with them of who needs to have mask, where we're wearing mask. You know, contractually, Live Nation makes you do X, Y, and Z. Got it? We're on board. Hey, our building staff, we're, we're not doing that, or we're not requiring that. Um, you might have vax requirements, you know, we do for this population and not for that population. But as Ben said, it's that relationship ahead of time with the advanced team. Because we all know, whatever conversation we just have with the advanced team, when the artist gets here in six weeks, it's changed five times. Um, but just as long as you've had those conversations and those touch points, and then you get to be real, real in those forty-eight hours leading up to it. And you know, hey, this is what we can execute. You set the expectations. Um, and maybe that's no different than how tours were before, but now it's front and center and there's more eyeballs on it.
Yeah. Got it. Uh, I'm gonna shift gears a little bit back to the technology piece and I'm gonna pose this to Steve. You guys are probably looking at kind of my layout. I kind of changed things. One of the, the questions that was brought up is, as a result of COVID, please share some creative ways through technologies that you have kept your customers and fans engaged. And I think, you know, I think as we look at the fan-centric piece, and this could be evolving as we speak. Uh, uh, any thoughts there um, from a technology standpoint, keeping the fans and customers engaged?
Well, we're using one right now. And so um, just uh, the ability to have uh, Zoom, maybe you're putting uh, um, more, more of our coaches, more uh, of an athletic director, other things. There's more, more opportunities to um, pull off um, more content. Uh, our, our app um, has, has gotten a lot more use. Our teams are generating a lot more content and realizing that everyone is coming to our venue. But at the same time, trying to remind folks that here's what you could experience if you're in our venue from a fan uh, engagement standpoint. So we're giving it to you right now, but you're gonna, you want any more of this, you're gonna have to come to the venue and experience. And this is why it's so special in our venue. Um, something we're doing very simple and it's, it's as, as, as old as, as day. But at, at our baseball venue, uh, last week, we've had opening day now. And um, we have a new coach and, and he wanted to bring fans inside the dugout. Okay, okay. So we, they are, 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 um, big screen partners have put up um, little POV cameras in our, in our dugout to try to bring the fans in the venue closer down to the field, closer to the action. We've added wireless cameras just to bring everybody into uh, into the, into the mix. And it's because they're in the venue that they get to see this. Maybe we'll share those cameras with the TV partners when they come to town. Uh, but we're trying to get people to, to come back and if they're at home, we can only engage them through our technology.
That's good. Yeah, I think we uh, I think we all on this call agree that, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, it was, you know, you try to keep everybody away from the court. Away, you know, obviously the high dollar ticket sales away from the field. But now it's, that's a revenue generator that us in the security business, you know, we need to understand that, that uh, we can make a positive impact. Uh, maybe not with some of the staffing challenges that we're dealing with, but with helping with opportunities is, is things like that. Brian, I know you guys have a, a lot of good technology things for the fans out, out west there. Could you share some of your insight as well?
Yeah, I think, I mean, for the Golden State Warriors, that's, you know, that, that's a hot ticket. We're, you know, we're, we're a good team. You know, we've got obviously the best shooting guard in the history of the game. It's, it's a lot of excitement and there are things that go into each and every game. But the ticket price itself is, is, I would, I would say the highest probably in the industry. So everything that goes into that is, we have gone to extreme lengths, just, just like everyone else on this call to assure the guests that it's gonna be a, a wonderful experience. It's gonna be a safe experience. And we're also not going to tolerate some of the guest behaviors that we've seen play out in a variety of different venues. You know, we've, we've not touched on this, but some of the, I guess, pent up frustration that, you know, that I see it as individuals who haven't been out for a while. They want to overindulge, they want to overdo it. And some of these behaviors, you know, sometimes, you know, result in an ejection, others result in an arrest. You know, you, you've got to be able to handle these situations efficiently um, and, and do it in a sense of restoring the guest experience for all, everybody else. So, you know, it's, it's not so much technology there. It's just getting down to the basics of how do we maintain this festive environment? Uh, we, we don't have any patience for bad behavior. The days of relocating someone who is not uh, complying and, and and being a part of good fan code of conduct is over. And if you go on about it in a professional and diligent way, and we'll continue to do that. And I think our, our fans appreciate that.
Well, you, you hit on a topic. That was another question or a comment I was gonna bring up is just that fan behavior piece. I think, you know, one of the things for our, our, our friends on the call here, for this group, you know, we want to try to talk about issues that impact us directly. You know, that we see on a day-to-day basis. I mean, we can have these town halls and talk about a lot of different things. But I think everyone on this call understands the staffing, the fan behavior. Um, and all those things are really playing an important part in how we are successful in running an event. And um, you know, one of the questions that I have, and I won't give my answer, but is, is that one of the main challenges that we're seeing, you know, out of this COVID? Um, social justice and other issues um, related to that over the past couple of years. And I'm gonna pose that first one to uh, Steve Miller.
You know, we experienced, you know, uh, uh, great uptick in, in social justice uh, issues on our campus from a, just a general student population uh, during, during the, the height of COVID. And those things directly affect our student athletes and student athletes um, actions uh, inversely affect a fan reaction. So simply um, student athletes, you know, opting to kneel during a national anthem doesn't resonate with every fan or resonates in a negative manner. We had, um, as crazy as it sounds, it didn't resonate with one of our ushers. And so an usher throws off her shirt, throws it down and says, no, not going to, not, not gonna work an event where um, the student athlete is, is reacting that way. Um, we've all seen it from a professional standpoint, but when it comes down to it, you know, some of those actions do incite it. So, you know, we've worked with our student athletes to, to simply modify maybe when the national anthem is happening. Do you, do you want to be on the court for it or what, what does your team want to do? And our teams are like, no, we just soon not be out there because we don't want to um, alienate our fans. We don't want to, you know, even start that conversation. Um, you know, but if it does happen, then we'll, we'll react if we're out there for the anthem. But um, it was from long conversations uh, with our athletes that, that got us there. And um, you know, it's kind of helped with some of our behaviors. We, we've been lucky here not to have a whole lot of behavior issues. We had our largest uh, crowds in the history of, of our football stadium here at Texas A and M this year. And we had forty-five alcohol-related incidents the whole season. Going to a stadium that has a hundred thousand seats in it. Um, we're extremely, extremely lucky and, and um, you know, it goes to the, the, the type of fans that, that we have here. It's, I'm not sure we're doing anything else to mitigate anything, um, but those are the realities that we live in.
Yeah. Farrell, what about uh, in the, uh, in New Orleans?
Well, since we, um, we host two tents in the building, the New Orleans Saints and uh, New Orleans Pelicans. Those leagues have, and jokingly appreciate this, they have specific guidelines that govern fan code of conduct that give us back. Um, I haven't seen in New Orleans a uptick in fan behavior. I think initially we're so grateful to get back to the venue, they kind of behave themselves. That, that time might be turning because we're not doing so well. This thing's hard, the Pelicans, well, you're a little bit upset with this. We're basically seeing, but, but we haven't seen an uptick in, in, in any peculiar or, you know, egregious fan behavior thus far. But the guidelines give us a backing. They really do. Um, our team in New Orleans were a little bit more tolerant than Brian is in, 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 in San Francisco. You know, we, we are New Orleans, right? So our tolerant level is a little bit, is a little, a little bit there. Um, but, but nonetheless, you know, we, we have, we have good fans here. Um, our team is well-trained to identify those behavior that warrant uh, some immediate action, um, zero to sixty, whatever that may bring us. Um, um, but that's where we are right now uh, with, with that. Um, they clearly know the, the expectations, the, the teams do a great, great job in terms of promoting the proper behavior will be tolerated in game, pre-game, you know, before you go, those type of things. They do extremely good job with that. So the expectation is there and we've been very fortunate.
Good, good. Ben, what about you? Well, you got a baseball starting here pretty soon, but uh, uh, hopefully. Uh, but uh, any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we um, uh, are, are, we noticed a great change in fan behavior. Um, you know, we are, ejections probably tripled over the previous year. Um, I mean, we, we had a lot going, net bad for us, you know, on top of COVID and um, the social unrest, but then, you know, just from the Astros having their own um, headline news a few years ago. Um, so we, we just had the triple punch, basically. Uh, people, people come into the venue. Uh, but, and, and that stemmed, uh, that made us really reevaluate our, our guest services um, aspect. Like what are, what are we allowing fans? How, how, how much grace are we gonna give a fan who's, who's acting? Um, you know, who's not acting within our guidelines. Uh, and then we, we just became stricter. I mean, we gave less warnings, uh, es- especially when it comes to people talking negatively to our staff. There, there's, there is no, hey, you got a warning for, you know, using some rude behavior to our staff. It's, it's one and done. You're out. We're not, we, we have to, the staff is, the, the staff is, is, is coming to work. Um, you know, at a time where they don't really want to work. So if they come here and then they have to deal with people who are rude to them or, you know, cursing at them, things like that, they're definitely not gonna work. So protecting the staff um, really more than before um, stemmed from a lot of fan behavior. During the postseason last, this last year, we actually had police officers walking down every aisle. Um, there, at the top and bottom of every inning to increase that presence to, to let fans know, you're not gonna get away with um, starting, you know, crap in our stadium. We want everyone to have a good time. This is a family-friendly place and treated, treated with that respect. Uh, so we, we heavily invested in putting forward a lot of messaging to the fans. Um, every inning break, you would have a, something to go up on the, the big board talking about fan behavior. Um, pushing those social media alerts, uh, as people, you know, uh, Pushing those social media alerts as people, you know, an hour before first pitch there and throughout the ballgame, talking about fan behavior. And just keep pushing and keep pushing it. And when we did that, we saw less, but I think people, people took us a lot more serious. I think if you're pushing it in their face so much, like, geez, these, these guys are real, I can't spit on the ground without someone wanting to take me out. And, and, you know, it's it's continuously to to set that expectation with the fans.
Yeah, good. We have a question here and and Dr. Jolly, just bear with me here. I think you saw it, the regarding the Omicron and testing, this is probably prior to everything changing, the scurry of changing. But I guess, you know, the question is, what's the the latest best practice to ensure our staff are returning back to work in a reasonable amount of time and not out of work for an extended period of time? And obviously, the jurisdiction, state, city guidelines. The additionally, what is the take on these reports, true or not true regarding Omicron? And, you know, I think, and you can, you know this better than anybody, this is an ever changing situation. So I think if you can, you know, I'd be curious your take on, you know, the best practices, staying abreast of everything and really monitoring so that, you know, our staff are returning back at the right time and not before.
Yeah, thanks. This is an interesting question, and it's interesting scientifically, and it's interesting practically, and how do you, how do you deal with this information? You know, I've heard hour long presentations on this subject that didn't come to conclusion, so I'll try to be quick. But, you know, yes, it's true that among the various variants, we've seen changes in a little bit of how the disease presents. I mean, you, it's interesting, you heard early on, there was this classic loss of smell and taste. And we're not seeing that as much with the other variants. They're just odd things that are different. And there's some timing things that are different among the various variants too. The first thing to remember is that, you know, if 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 your public health authorities say that you that Omicron or any other variant is dominant in your community, the odds are that somebody who's got COVID has that variant. So you're not gonna test each individual for the variants. But you do need to be aware of the dynamics of the various viruses. And, and so as far as an individual best practice, we may have reached a point where narrowing the testing window in something that presents in a narrow way is important. But it also, there are multiple factors that play into that. How how high is the vaccination rate among that group that you're testing? You know, how high is the booster rate among that group that you're testing? You know, how are the, how, what's their exposure rate? What, how well are they wearing masks? All those factors come into it, and this is where going back to what we talked about earlier. Sitting down with a real expert in local public, whether it's your dean of your school of public health or the local public health director, or somebody who understands this can really advise based on what your community dynamic is, what the best testing strategy is. And I, that that didn't give you an exact answer of, all right, it's at forty eight hours. But that's hard to do because it's a variable question. But really taking advantage of public health authorities and recognizing the answer may be different now than it was a year ago because the virus does change.
Interesting, very interesting. Yeah, I, I saw that question and it, you know, I think as we, you know, we're getting close to our time here about about fifteen minutes to go and, you know, that is something that I think best practices and using this forum here is is gonna be very critical for us as we as we move forward, not backwards, in dealing with this pandemic, and I'll use the word pandemic as a whole. The question was also brought up is that, and this is, I don't want to get, I'm having a little tough one here. You know, how can we continue to ensure public safety at large scale events while not infringing on obviously our our fans' individual rights to keep one's medical information private? I don't want, this is not a political question, but I think it is something that we in the business and everyone on this call thinks about because that is an issue and then trying to navigate that. And Steve, you know, at a high level, not, you know, to get specific, what are your thoughts on that?
You know, we, we seem to have to take on something every year, every couple of years, whether it's the, whether it's COVID, whether it's swine flu or bird flu NH, and I am sure Dr. Jolly could ramble off some of those deals that we have dealt with and and we've taken all of those on at all of our venues with, you know, modifications that go along. Our goal to keep those events going and and that our guests keep coming to those events. But, you know, every, every jurisdiction is gonna have their own approach to to this. I think we've seen that around the country, what what's happening in one part of the country doesn't happen in another part of the country. So we took it a different way is, you know, maybe we're just simply, you know, to our guests, once we've taken care of our business, that we're just making sure that our guests know that, you know, we're encouraging, you know, good health messaging. Quite simply, every, every venue, I beg to, beg to guess, has a healthcare sponsor, a healthcare partner, the this hospital chain, this or that, every, or maybe it's a university's health system. Everybody's got a partner. And my guess is those sponsor partners are always looking to activate in some message way, some way. How can they, how can they help? At least ours are. And so I think you just gotta use those, use, use those partners you already have to help share that that message of of just general good health and whatever the practice of the day is and and engage those partners that you already have.
Yeah. Joe, what are your thoughts on that? Because I know, you know, privacy and everything is tough, but you know, I think Steve, you hit on the head. We all have health partners somewhere, you know, in there.
Yeah, it's, it's a couple of different answers on this one. As I was thinking about this. Look, as as venue operators, we can provide a lot of different things, but there's still an amount of self responsibility that needs to take place, right? I can't force, and I shouldn't be forced, and I shouldn't be making staff forced to like people, people wearing masks, right? Asking our our twelve fifteen hour folks to check medical information, like all that stuff needs to be embedded in the ticket ahead of time, or you didn't get the tickets, like getting on a flight, like you were checked for your background or your your driver's license, you were ran through a system prior. It's not on the TSA person. He doesn't know your medical information, he doesn't know your financial background. It's no different from from our event staff. So as long as you've been cleared through the technology, or clear, no pun there, but cleared to get the ticket. I just need to make sure that I take you from a red space to a green space, right? Like you, you can come into the building without a, without a weapon, right? And like, the idea of adding health requirements on top of that, we are not practitioners. We're not, we're not hiring doctors and lawyers and nurses, but we can make masks available, we can make sanitizer available. But there's gotta be a certain sense of self responsibility to the person, to the fan coming. And then like on our side, it's the courtesy of having, like, if we want fans here, we make these supplies available. And then when you run into this intersection of, hey, I'm, I'm, I want to be masked up and everything else, like, that's cool. Do that, feel that way, be that way, and I gotta make you comfortable in that environment. First, the first one that doesn't want to wear a mask, you know, he doesn't have the right to intrude on that other person for 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 that. But when it comes to the medical piece, like, like, I, I don't think the the security guards and the cops, they shouldn't know about your medical information. Like, that needs to get vetted ahead of time. If that's a requirement that our insurance companies are making us have, and that's Live Nations are making us have, hey, everyone's gotta be vaccinated coming in. I, I think that's a really hard thing to do because we all know that's all, that's all, that's some made up screenshot on your phone that you're holding up and that the guard's looking at as you come through, like.
Yeah.
That's not real. Like, we all know that by now. So it's unfair to think the guards can, should be doing stuff like that.
Yep. Pharoah?
Yeah, I agree with Joe. I mean, that's definitely, we had these conversations over and over with our human resource department in terms of how we should, we address this. And and I agree with Joe and Steve. It's about accountability of that person. Laughing at Joe about the screenshots. I was talking to my guest service department, and the most lost item is a, is the, is the card, the vaccination card. I say, you know why? Because it's not real. They just throw it away once they get it. So that's what we're dealing with. So, you know, I, I really just concur with Joe and and Steve regarding that. It's a tough, we're not interested in that. You know, we only mandate what is, what is proposed to us by our state and local authorities or what have you. I think the ticket itself has a condition to it to enter. You can wrap that around it, you know, when you buy that ticket, you condition to some aspects of walkthrough, metal detector screening or what have you. Maybe that should be, you know, wrapped into it a little bit more closer, but I, I don't want to be in the business of anybody medical condition or what have you. I know we're not interested in that at all.
Yep, yeah, well, good, good. Well, as we, as we, as we look to wrap up, and I want to first of all, you know, thank everyone for participating. Is there any last comments that you have before I kind of close and pass it over to Lou? Don't all jump at once.
Good. Well, well, no, I just want to say thank you. And I think three of the common themes, as I was listening to our discussions today. One revolved around staffing. I think that's a, that's one of the main issues that had impacts all of our business that we have to try to figure out. The second piece is technology, using technology in place of staffing and how are we gonna augment that? Various things, you know, from a security and safety perspective. And then the third piece, and I think Dr. Jolly really hit on this from a medical aspect, and COVID is really building those relationships with your health department, your public health department professionals. This is not going away. We're gonna have to navigate through this and, you know, building up those relationships from when they were in the past between food contamination to now, really being able to understand what's going on, all the different changes that could be happening, whether it's it's COVID or something else that might might come up, come up, come up. So on behalf of myself and Lou, I just want to thank the panel. I think this was a great discussion. I really appreciate everyone joining the discussion online. And I think, you know, having these town halls and Lou can touch on this, is really gonna really help our business as we look to to continue to bring fans back to the stadiums and move forward into a a new dynamic. So thank you very much.
Let me say this, Charles, thank you so much for a tremendous town hall panel. Your, you know, your insight and wisdom is certainly a great guide to us as, as we go through the next couple of, well, next couple of months, actually, as we get activities back going. I think, Chris, if you want to, I think we have a ebook that I like to share with everybody that they they can get. It's the principal guide to return to work, play and spectate. This document, just like our meeting today was investment of about ninety of us in this profession to help guide us back to to work, play and spectate. So you can access the and download the e-publication with the RFP right there. So take advantage of that. And then I, I want to close by saying that what you saw today, think in terms of a conference we're gonna have in May twenty fourth to twenty sixth at Caesar's Palace in Las Vegas. Taking a look at at what they said today from the perspective of the fan, the journey of the fan, the voice of the fan, and and look at, we'll look at safety and security. We're gonna look at fan behavior during that conference. We're looking at new business models that are that are affecting us like esports and gaming. We're gonna definitely spend time again on this pandemic to endemic environment that we discussed today. We can't avoid labor force issues. That'll be heavily discussed in 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 May as well. And taking a look at facility design and how does the facility design in our facilities affect that that fan journey? And what, what does the fan expect today? That's different than maybe pre or pre COVID era. And and obviously, the last thing, as we heard today, sustainability down the road. What does this mean to us in the profession? So if this is any indication today of the quality of the expertise we have on the panel, I think in terms of that at the conference here in May. So we're looking forward to everyone hopefully coming out to Las Vegas to be part of this unique new conference in our country to help our profession. So again, thank you, audience, great participation from you, your questions were great. Panel, super job as usual. And all of us, on behalf of IFX, thank you so much for being part of a significant event like today. So thank you, folks.